I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session? I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 3.1, Ms. Serza, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, we begin tonight with a reminder about the course planning night and curriculum fairs taking place this week. The middle school course planning night is happening right now at the Williamsburg Community Chapel. Students and their families have the opportunity to learn about courses for next year and programs offered in our schools along with the registration process. The high school planning night and curriculum fair scheduled for this Thursday is scheduled for this Thursday, February the sixth. The chapel is one of the only place large enough in our area to accommodate the number of families who participate each year. Speaking of planning for next year, a small group of eighth grade students from James Blair Middle got a taste of high school life yesterday. They were part of the first annual Scholar Spring Board at Jamestown High School. We've got a brief video to show you of what the day entailed.
The main focus of today was to take some of our students who are in honors classes or that we feel have the potential to be in an honors class and take them to the high school that they're in to start a real honors class. Not only honors classes, also upper level math classes, upper level classes, AP classes, so they can really understand what a high school classroom looks like, what's going to be expected of them, and talk to some students who are in those classes about how to be successful.
My experience at Jamestown was good. All the teachers and students.
So I think academically, one of the benefits of doing this is for them to see what high school is going to look like for them. They're going in a few short months. They are about to choose all of their classes for high school. So it's a good chance for them to see what a classroom, how it functions at the high school level, because it's very different. You have ninety minutes of class versus just fifty minutes of class. And it's not ju- it may not be like twenty minutes of activity here, twenty minutes of activity here. It could be just ninety minutes of lecture. And they need to be exposed to the different types of classroom environments that they're going to be in. So I thought that was a good experience for them to be able to see different types of classes, from AP Statistics to Principles of Biomedical Science where there was a fake dead body on the floor and they had to kind of figure out how that person died and there was like evidence around. That was a really cool experience. One of my students was very interested in that and I think that kind of sparked a little interest in him. And now he says he wants to, he's interested in being a detective and maybe studying criminal justice and forensic science. So as far as the social aspect of it, it was a good experience for the students to be able to talk to the juniors and seniors. They had a student panel discussion. They were able to ask questions.
The best piece of advice that I received was to keep your options open and try to run the games.
The Jamestown students told our students like what a typical day is like, what's expected of them if they're athletes, if they want to get involved with extracurricular activities. It was just a great experience for them to be able to hear from students and teenagers, not just hear it from the adults all the time. These kids are so excited to go to high school. And now that they've actually been in that high school and seen what it looks like, they're ready. So, I mean, we're sad to see them go, but excited for what the future holds for them.
What a great opportunity for students who may not be familiar with advanced course offerings and AP classes. The Scholar Spring Board was a pilot program for this year. We hope to expand the program next school year with the assistance of our wonderful middle and high school counselors. Speaking of counselors, this week is National School Counselor Week. It is the perfect time to thank our incredible counselors who support students in so many ways, from course planning to personal growth and intervention. Our counselors are amazing people and a huge resource for students. This evening, I'd also like to give a quick shout out to our school board members. February is School Board Appreciation Month. Serving on a school board takes a tremendous amount of time and commitment. We are so fortunate to have the best of the best with us here in Williamsburg James City County Schools. On behalf of the students, families, and staff of WJCC schools, I want to thank you for all that you do for our schools and our community. Thank you. Our school board members and all of our WJCC schools' employees make an incredible difference in the lives of students, families, and colleagues every single day in ways big and small. We are asking our community to help us celebrate the unsung heroes in our schools and offices by nominating an employee as a WJCC school's hero of hope. We will be accepting nominations through April fifth at wjccschools.org/heroesofhope, and the winners will be announced during our Spring Employee Appreciation Week in early May. I look forward to reading and sharing your stories of our hope heroes among us. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Moving on to item 5.1, opportunity for citizens to provide comment to the board. I will toss it to Mr. Kelly.
Is it Scott?
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens, as our new speaker, should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making references to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hummel. Claire Brantley.
Good evening. My name is Claire Brantley. I'm one of the school counselors at Stonehouse Elementary School. And my main purpose, first and foremost, is to just thank you all, especially for your priority in last year's budget and adding the five full-time additional school counselors to our division. And I wanted to kind of share what that impact looks like now that we've been in our new school year for half a year. So we ran some data. We track our use of time every month. And at Stonehouse and at Matoka, those are the two elementary schools that moved from having one full-time and one half-time to now having two full-time counselors this year. And in both of our schools, the average improvement that we've seen in our use of time is nine point five percent. So what does that number mean? We took about nine point five percent of our time that we used to use in logistical matters and planning and managing our program, and that time has gone away and is now able to be used face-to-face with students. What does that mean in terms of time, nine point five percent? That's a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven more hours of face-to-face time with students because of this change. That's a hundred and eleven hours that we used to sit in front of computers or plan and that we now get to sit in front of students. So thank you so much. That's a huge improvement. But please note that this is also a number that factors in us having a weekly parent volunteer who helps us manage that load. And she's actually written to the school board last year on behalf of school counseling, funding. And so we still, even with this improvement, are not meeting the now law, the now Virginia law of eighty percent direct face-to-face service with students. So even with that improvement and us pulling in outside resources, we're still not there. We're right around seventy-six percent now at Stonehouse. And so we're just being open and honest with you as to how much we're doing to try to reach that standard. But we can't be more than one person and we can't duplicate time, right? Those are very finite resources. So please, thank you for considering additional school counselors in this coming budget that you're working on and the moving forward toward that one to two fifty ratio. We went from having one to five hundred to now one to three seventy-five at Stonehouse. So we're on the right track, and we thank you so, so, so much for prioritizing us and respecting us.
I see your shirt.
I'm a school counselor because your lives are worth my time.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item 6.1, the twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring a proposed calendar to the school board for your consideration, a recommendation made by the calendar committee. And Dr. Murphy is here this evening. He led the committee this year and will present the recommendation to you. Dr. Murphy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share with you a brief overview of the draft version of the calendar for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as well as a preview of the calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Both have been developed in conjunction with the WJCC Calendar Committee, as well as the Regional Calendar Committee composed of representatives from Hampton, Newport News, Pecosin, Gloucester, York, and of course, WJCC. So each year, the Calendar Committee develops these drafts based on the Virginia State Code as well as the standards of accreditation, which requires school divisions to provide instruction for a minimum of one hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and ninety hours each school year. Other considerations for the committee are regional alignment, professional development time, and Election Day provisions. The process begins annually when the Regional Calendar Committee meets to discuss the needs of shared programs and to provide consistency of schedules for employees that may have kids in other divisions. From there, we identify needs and wishes and go back to discuss that with our Division Calendar Committee. The WJCC Calendar Committee meets to discuss, prioritize, and finalize the draft for the consideration by the superintendent, and finally to present to the board for your consideration. The change in law now allows for school divisions to set a one hundred and eighty-day calendar where students attend school up to fourteen calendar days before Labor Day. If schools are, as long as schools are closed on the Friday immediately preceding the Labor Day holiday. This equated to only nine actual school days when considering the weekends and the four-day holiday. Currently, eighty-seven of Virginia's one hundred and thirty-two school divisions open in August. So the reasons for considering a pre-Labor Day start are, they came out from the survey response, was that it was posed as a question, why should we consider having the Labor Day start? The number-one response was the potential to end the school year earlier, which came in at seventeen hundred and eighty responses. Another request was potential to end first semester before the winter break, which came in at fourteen hundred and seven responses. And finally, the opportunity to make up additional days rounded out our most frequent responses. When considering, yeah, that slide, I don't think it's on the deck. That's why I was, oh, it skipped past it. I'm sorry. We had a total response, maximum responses of three thousand one hundred and twenty-two responses on that survey. Next was when considering the reasons reported by the families for having a pre-Labor Day start, the primary reason, the primary concern was scheduled family commitments and vacations.
I'm sorry. So the slide before were the pros and the slides the, I read.
The slide before, this is like here, diagrams, the reasons to why we should do it, why we should consider it. And the next slide just talked about when we do consider it, what should we keep in mind?
Okay.
And that's what it was. It was not necessarily pros and cons. It said, just keep in mind as you develop this plan.
Three thousand something on the pros and how many were?
No, no, no. They were just, they were just, the responses were three thousand one hundred and twenty-two responses. And there were no actual pros or cons. There were just reasons to consider it. And then this slide is just showing you things to keep in mind. Among the three thousand responses, there were fourteen hundred and ninety-six open-ended comments, and we analyzed them as a committee to develop the reoccurring themes and things that stood out, daycare adjustments, alignment with college and community calendars, what's best for students. And also, I noted desire for one-year notice before we make any plans. Yes.
What is the teacher-student burnout? What does that mean?
It was because that first year, we'll have a late school ending for one calendar and then an early school beginning for the start. And so they were very much concerned about that first year, you know, not having a break. Based on the feedback, the committee recommended adopting the twenty twenty-one, twenty, excuse me, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one calendar that was previewed last year. At your seats is a draft of the twenty twenty-one calendar in green. You'll note it has a hundred and eighty instructional days, three half-days for the designated staff development, which occur in October, January, and March, as well as the early release days for parent-teacher conferences, staff workdays, and exams. Notable dates from this calendar to keep in mind, the first day of school is September eighth, Thanksgiving, still has the three days of Thanksgiving, so Wednesday's off, two weeks of winter break, spring break from April fifth through ninth, and graduation scheduled for June nineteenth. Important holidays for next year. We still have Election Day off for students only, and it's still a contracted teacher workday. However, there is a bill working through the General Assembly that will make this a day off for all employees, but it's not been enacted yet. We will continue the practice of not designating makeup days. Instead, in the event of inclement weather, the calendar may be amended by the superintendent to make up for the time using a combination of bank time, staff days, and holidays. Next step for this calendar is for us to post the draft and ask for feedback starting tomorrow. The feedback received will be shared with the committee and the superintendent and will be used to guide any potential adjustments. We will then bring the finalized version back to the board for your discussion and possible approval. The timeline is as follows. The Calendar Committee created three draft versions of the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar that consider the feedback we received from our stakeholder surveys and align with the regional calendar. The committee was then polled to see which calendar they will recommend moving forward. The post-Labor Day start was favored by the majority of the committee respondents. A draft is at your table, and the notable dates are on the screen. As of today, no division in our region has finalized plans to shift their start dates, but all in our region are considering the option. The post-Labor Day calendar most closely mirrors what we're doing now for next year, still allowing for a three-day Thanksgiving break as well as two weeks of winter break. Important dates are listed there. Any your feedback?
I have a question on the Election Day and that being a teacher workday, as I understand it. On your first, or excuse me, the second slide, it says no classes on Election Day. I know that in the Stonehouse district, with parents, they're very concerned about the primary day being an instructional day. And so why is that not a student holiday, as we're calling it, for Election Days?
Well, currently, we do have primary day schedule as a late start. And so we'll give, we noticed that the bulk of our voters come in at the beginning of the day, and so we're going to adjust our schedule to have the kids come in late. We've also asked that students that drive at our polling high schools carpool, and we asked that parents utilize public transportation as the parking lot will be a, that's going to be a limiting factor for it.
How late would they start?
It's a two-hour delay currently.
Two-hour, okay.
That's for all school-based employees only.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Murphy. First, I'd like to ask a question about the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. So I know this is a draft only, but once we put it out there, you know, people are going to, you know, assume that it's got some heft behind it, and that's what we intend to do. And given that the feedback did request a year's notice, if we do change, I guess, in your estimation, how, is this etched in jello or is it, you know, a little bit more firm, the twenty-one, twenty-two, I mean, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year draft, which starts after Labor Day, if you get my point? I mean, at some point, we almost have to do this, adopt these two years ahead if we're ever going to consider moving so that families don't get caught flat-footed, if you will.
Well, the biggest thing now is to get some feedback, because we've done, we developed it as a regional calendar committee. We've developed it as a WJCC calendar committee. We've also had the survey input, but we need to get some feedback as to what was produced based on all that feedback. And so that's our next course of action.
So this is your proposal? And then, moving to the twenty twenty-one calendar, I guess from my perspective, we really need to put students first. And I'm, because of some changes recently, I'm becoming increasingly skeptical about relying on the regional calendar and wonder how valuable that is to us, particularly now that we have the ability to start before Labor Day and we can potentially do that independently of the region. And as early college trends up in terms of sheer numbers when compared to New Horizons, at any point, it could be that there are more early college kids than there are New Horizons kids. And so I wonder how, if we're thinking about kids first, the impact of the calendar on those kids, because the kids who are going to early college, they're having to finish up a month early to get ready to go to early college. And so I'm concerned about that. So again, I know it's not just students, that there's faculty and, you know, that we share people, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that I wonder, before, when we were not able to start before Labor Day, I think it was, we really didn't have any option but to rely on that regional calendar. But now I wonder how important that is moving forward for us.
Yes, I just want to say, I'm very happy to see that for the December holiday that employees and students have the full two weeks. I think some of the feedback that many of us received about having that extra, those extra days made a huge difference as far as morale and everything else. So I'm happy to see that on both calendars, they have the full two weeks. So thank you very much for that.
May I just comment on Ms. Cook's question or comment? One of the main reasons driving the committee's recommendation to keep a post-labor for the second year was because we couldn't finish the semester before, the end of the semester before winter break. That comes down to the language in the law. If it had said fourteen workdays, we could have. And our schedule in WJCC is actually more prohibitive than anyone else's because of our, the way it, the four-by-four schedule. And so other systems could actually finish before winter break and fit it in, but we can't. As you're aware, we're going into a real, really strong review of our whole scheduling process at middle and high school. I don't know if there's changes will be recommended coming out of that that actually might make a pre-Labor Day start more of an option for us moving forward. But those are two of the things that are working right now that we need the gift of time to really consider everything.
So, Dr. Heron, those eighty-seven school divisions that currently open before Labor Day, are you saying that those school systems probably aren't on a block schedule and that's how it works for them? Or are there some that are on a block schedule and they figured it out?
There are some to the west of us with inclement weather, much more snow, that have it a waiver, and they've started more than fourteen days before Labor Day for a long time. The law's providing just fourteen calendar days for those likely to change now. So, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Some start as early as the twelfth from our research. So there are some systems that start very early in August, and they were able to do it if they're on the four-by-four. The four-by-four, we definitely need at least eighty-seven to eighty-eight days in first semester. And by doing fourteen calendar days, it only afforded us nine actual instructional days. It just didn't give us enough time to shift the schedule.
Okay, and so that extra fourteen calendar days, the workdays, sorry, would get a lot closer. Okay, so the way the law is currently written, these other school districts that are on a block schedule are waived and have more time than that. That's what you're saying.
Correct. Some people have waivers for inclement weather that they really have every single year. We're never eligible for that.
So those eighty-seven school systems finish before the holidays?
It's actually, when I looked at the review of them, some of them start early and finish later. It just depends on what their, I think some of those school systems are dealing with the inclement weather situation, and they end up having a longer schedule altogether. So you have a lot of variables in there. With the length of our contract, the minimum is one hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and ninety hours. Some school systems build in schedules that have a little bit more time.
Yeah, so it's a spin of, it's either a longer school day or give you more time off during the school year. Because the one, the one thing that we've always, it seems kind of strange to talk about that when it's sixty-five degrees on February fourth, but we've always thought about having more flexibility for snow and hurricane, taking pressure off the snow and hurricane days is why we would start before Labor Day and maybe have a few extra days of spring break so that you could recover from that if you had to. So that was kind of where we were, that's kind of what I was coming from, is why you would start before Labor Day, was just to maybe give a couple extra days of spring break and then, and then, so that if the snow days and the hurricane days don't come, you get more time at spring break. And if they do come, you can take the Friday and the Monday on opposite sides of the long weekends. But to Mrs. Cook's point, on the regional calendar, I mean, is at this point, do we drive the regional calendar or do we get victimized by it? So do we say, we think we should start on the Wednesday or the Tuesday and then see if people follow, right? So, anyway, the other thing, too, I want to talk about was Election Day. You know, I'd really like to see that as be a flexy commute day. I'm not sure if that's a calendar thing or if that's an administration thing, but, you know, just giving that benefit to our teachers, particularly this year with being a general election, getting people out of the buildings on that. election, getting people out of the buildings on that day, because it could conceivably be a very well-attended day, and we're just, kind of, kind of good to do that.
If I could just speak to that, we certainly are looking at all options right now. We're actually looking at 12-month calendar leave and all comparing to other systems and looking at e-commute options and comparing other systems. And then we'll, I'll let the board know what the administrative decision is on that. But we're not, we're certainly not against it right now.
Or e-commute are a flex day, so if they put in their grades on a Sunday versus on a Tuesday, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're aware of the, of the hard work of teachers and certainly are looking at it very closely right now.
And I agree with what, what Ms. Cook said and what has been stated about, you know, giving them, giving people a head, a year head start of when you're gonna, if you're gonna adjust before Labor Day, so that when they're making vacation plans, because those are oftentimes a year advance, that they had that, had that information prior to a year ahead of time, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
Dr. Murphy, yeah, actually, one quick comment and then I had a question or two. Is I, and I noticed, looking at the, the middle school students going to the high schools for the first time, one of the things that I think it's really important to keep in mind, many of our students are able to take many more courses as a result of the block scheduling that we have. So I, I think it's really important to keep that in mind, as, you know, as we, as we deal with the calendar. The other thing is, I noticed these weren't in here, and I know we talked about it at the Calendar Committee, is the location and, and some of the issues with the workdays and the PD days. Can you, can you explain, first of all, explain what that means, but also more important, why, why that is a challenge, because we, we spend a lot of time talking about that?
Right. This, this calendar here is our academic, our instructional calendar, so we have to consider those when we're building this calendar. But until this gets adopted, everything that we talked about is really kind of a plan. And so we, once we get the calendar, we'll backdate the instructional days, or, excuse me, the PD days, the return-to-school days for the teachers. But that's actually a HR slash superintendent conversation as opposed to our Calendar Committee.
Okay, so, and I've forgotten the number, but the number of, and this is, make sure I understand this, this is state requirement, the number of workdays and, you know, PD, that's all. In other words, we don't have any control over that. We have to build those in, right?
PD days, I want to say that's a purview of our HR and our contract days.
Things per the teacher contract, number of days, there's a number of professional development days and workdays that make up after the 180, make up to their full contract days.
And can you, how many of those, do you remember how many? The reason I'm bringing this up, because it's gonna come up again, and that is trying to squeeze all of those days into the calendar is a, is a real challenge. And I know one of the things that came up is, which I thought, you know, there were some bizarre dates when we, we had to, we had to do this, but there were no other days and it has to be done. And is there any, so is there any way, you know, that can be modified, or is it just, is this just out of the state and in their infinite wisdom and all that kind of stuff? And you're not have to answer that now, but it's, I know, that was, that was a major topic of discussion when we, when, you know, when our, when the Calendar Committee met, was how, you know, how to accommodate all that stuff.
Well, I just wanted to comment on the fact that, thank you for serving on that committee, but you also got an inside look at how the sausage is made. And you really saw that there's, there's a give and take. There's a give and take to everything that we do. So if we want to make everyone feel good, would you do this, the cost? I mean, we had looked at some versions that had us working on, up to December 23rd. We were looking, we were considering all options in order to make the calendar work, and this is our best thinking so far.
I understand. Thanks.
Dr. Beers, are you, just, are you suggesting taking a look at the contract, the, the length of the contract?
No, actually, I'm not really suggesting anything. It's, it's like, it's a reality. The only suggestion I might have would be to spend some time with some of the people at the State Department and say, you know, you need to do a reality check once in a while, because it, because it's, it's, it is additional burdens for teachers who have a pretty packed year as it is. And, and I know we do great professional development, it's not that, but it's just, I don't think I would have brought it up if I hadn't heard a lot of teachers talking about it when I went to the Committee, that's all.
Dr. Beers? I would just like to echo too what Ms. Cook mentioned. I think one, one exciting opportunity in, in starting before Labor Day would be to, to end the semester, but we now know that we can't because of the language, Dr. Heron. Can you speak to, is, are there plans to go back, circle back around to the General Assembly and finesse that language?
I do know the superintendents are talking about the possibility of trying to invite someone to carry a bill forward that might change the language next year. We're, I don't know if that will happen or not, but we're certainly looking at that possibility. And I do know even though we're putting out a draft that is post-labor two years from now, that doesn't mean to say we'll always stay post-labor. We still have opportunities, and when we look at our scheduling and all of the pieces connected to that, we may be back at the table again. So it's not a, it's not, we're not gonna stay the same forever. This could, could change once we feel the time is right for us.
Questions for Dr. Murphy?
Thank you.
The only thing I'd say is, is great work, and I think, I think I'm willing to support the calendar for next year that's out there, so. opposed.
Okay, moving on to item 7.1, the Equity Series with Bright Beginnings, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Walker's going to set off and introduce in our third of an Equity Series for this year, and Ms. Gulick is here as well, and the focus of today's presentation will be Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program progress. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to share information and student progress about the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program. This evening, we will reflect on the history of the program, its current status, kindergarten readiness data, the perspective of teachers, a student, and a parent, and the importance of early interventions in a high-quality educational program prior to entering kindergarten. The School Division's strategic plan Elevate Beyond Excellence guides teaching and learning in the administration and operations in WJCC schools and reflects our commitment to elevate public education beyond excellence. The Bright Beginnings Preschool Program is directly aligned to goal number two, Educational Equity Strategy number three, ensure all eligible students have access to high-quality preschool education focusing on the whole child and fostering kindergarten readiness. Before looking at the present and future needs, let's take a moment to reflect upon the birth and growth of pre-k programming in WJCC. Back in 1976, the Early Education Development Center opened at Norwich Elementary in response to the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. Then in 1983, the Bright Beginnings Program was established as a federal demonstration grant site serving at-risk pre-k children. And now today, we have 31 pre-k classrooms spread across five school sites. Claire Bird Baker, six classrooms. DJ Montague, two classrooms. JB Blatton, eight classrooms. Laurel Lane, six classrooms. And Norwich Elementary, nine classrooms. As we all know, the brain develops most rapidly during the earliest years of a child's life. High-quality early childhood development programs improve children's odds of success in school and life. This understanding and commitment is evident over the last 20 years as the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program has grown considerably from seven classrooms to the current 31 classrooms. Based on students' needs and parent awareness, this is due largely to the support of our school board, funding partners, and the strong collaborative partnership established between WJCC schools, the JCC Head Start Program, the Community Action Agency, and longstanding partnerships within the local community such as the Williamsburg Regional Library, Child Development Resources, College of William and Mary, and the Quanis Club of Tijuana, to name just a few. Did you know that nearly 100,000 students enter kindergarten classrooms in Virginia schools each fall? Forty percent of those students entering lack key literacy, math, self-regulation, and social skills needed to thrive in school. Seventy percent of disadvantaged children lack access to affordable early childhood care and early education.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it okay if we interrupt?
Yes.
So this, I found this slide, the, yeah, that one.
That one.
Particularly intriguing, do you know how we stack up compared to the last, the last two, you know, lines, the 40% and the 70%?
We have some excellent data we're gonna share.
Sorry.
In there. So this next chart shows the last five years enrollment for the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program. You will notice that more than half of the students are identified as receiving special education services. These students can be as young as two years old in the preschool program. That's because WJCC is obligated under the Child Find mandate as per Virginia Code, as well as adhering to IDEA regulations from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to locate, identify, and evaluate children residing in our jurisdiction, birth to age 21, who are in need of special education and related services. Additionally, WJCC coordinates child find activities for infants and toddlers, birth to age two, with the Part C Local Agency, CDR, known as Child Development Resources. So today, currently, we have 365 students with 12 more students being placed in the next week, for a total of 377. Of the current 365, 225 or 62% receive special education services. In addition to that, we have 38 at-risk three- and four-year-olds who are eligible for the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program but are on the waitlist due to no available space. Historically, we've had close to 100 eligible at-risk three- and four-year-old students on the waitlist at the end of the school year. We currently have 61 students awaiting special education eligibility, which means that we must hold open 61 available spots in the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program with the potential of eligibility for services. With these pending special education eligibilities, the Bright Beginnings Pre-K Program will easily reach 395 or 100% capacity as we are just beginning the start of the second semester.
And just to reemphasize something you said earlier, that you keep those open because we are required by law to.
Correct.
To serve those students if they.
Yes, sir.
Are found to be special education eligible.
Yes, sir.
So I just have, just a clarifying question. So you've got the 12 pending registrations, they're not special ed, they're not in that same number?
No.
So that's just 12 that.
That we're waiting to just.
That you're waiting, okay. But then the 61 is above the 365?
Correct.
That you guys have already identified that are zoned for our school system?
Potential, they're, they're in the process of special education eligibility.
Okay.
So they may or may not become eligible for special education services.
They're identified how? Through like CDR, through, like, who, is that primarily?
And Mrs. Gulick's gonna talk a little bit more about the, the screening and eligibility.
It's coming later, it's all right.
It's coming, it's coming.
Just to clarify what Julie said, it's three, it's 61 above the 377.
Correct.
Not, not of the.
And if, could you go back to the previous slide just really quickly? So if my math is correct, if we had kept the 55% mix in the 2014-15 year and projected that forward, instead of 389 kids, we'd have 460 enrolled if we had kept the percentage of the sped, that risk mix.
Percentage of the, yes.
So in other words, if we had, yeah, so if we had kept a more balanced mix, we'd have.
Correct.
We'd have nearly 80 more children. We'd be serving 80 more children, at-risk children. Okay, thank you.
So with that said, and upcoming slides, Mrs. Gulick, the proud principle of Bright Beginnings will now continue with the presentation.
Good evening. So every child who is referred to Bright Beginnings, they receive a comprehensive developmental screening as well as a direct interview with the families. Eligibility criteria include risk factors, children coming from adverse childhood experiences, and of course, identified or suspected delay or disability. And then we take them through the eligibility process if they have not already been identified.
So to Julie's point earlier, how does that, how do we identify two-year-olds?
So our two-year-olds come typically from Child Development Resources, and so they come in CDR as infants. CDR then uses their assessment measures. They identify them and create what's called an IFSP, and then once they age out of CDR, they come to the public school system. So oftentimes, because CDR's testing is so valid and reliable, we don't have to retest. Sometimes we might, and then we just use our typical testing measures that we use for all the other students to determine eligibility.
Are we concerned that there's a population out there that's not using CDR that we are not identifying?
There are.
Certainly. I mean, it goes back to Child Find. I think we do a very good job. I know CDR does a wonderful job in terms of outreach for the community, but I think there's probably always children out there that aren't always being identified.
So, so CDR is birth through two and a half, birth through three?
So they start to transition to, they age out at three. They start to transition to the public school system. If, if they can come in September 30th, if they're two by September 30th. However, we keep getting referrals as they start to come in CDR, and if they're old enough, two and a half, usually, they refer them to us, and then we take them through eligibility, and then we place them in a classroom.
Quick, what, just one quick question, just because everybody might not know what those are. Could you just briefly identify the adverse childhood experiences, those risk factors?
Sure.
Because they're very, they were really critical when this program began, and I just want to make sure that we're still doing that.
Absolutely. So one of the greatest risk factors or adverse childhood experiences, those terms are being used interchangeably now, but of course, students who are coming from economic disadvantage, so we're looking at poverty levels, children who are coming from extensive trauma, abuse, domestic violence, we, children who have involvement with CPS, children who are on foster care, clearly those children who are homeless, and now, of course, we're starting to see a lot more families with, struggling with addiction, incarceration, those kinds of things.
Things like low birth rate, educational level of the parent?
Low birth rate is certainly still something that we look at. Education of the parent is still considered a risk factor, but it's becoming sort of lower on our list because of these other adverse experiences are showing to have greater impact on children's development.
Luxury to look at that now.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on? So, are we, okay. So students participating in Bright Beginnings enjoy a four-hour school day from 8:30 to 12:30 or 9:30 to 1:30, depending on the location site. Students are serviced by all highly qualified and state-licensed teachers. Programming supports the development of the whole child, meaning students' social, emotional, cognitive, self-care, adaptive needs are all met. The classroom teachers also conduct regular home visits, engaging with the family, providing educational resources to the parents, and really trying to provide that wraparound service that they so desperately need. The Virginia Preschool Initiative, often referred to as VPI, that's our state's program intended to program, to provide quality preschool to our at-risk four-year-olds. Currently, we have 14 VPI classrooms.
Out of the 31.
Correct.
Are they also spread out among the five schools?
Yes.
Are the VPI classrooms, do they tend to have a higher student-to-teacher ratio than the?
Typically, because we do such a great job of braiding our funds in Williamsburg, James City County, it's really kind of hard to identify which of our classrooms are VPI and which are blended and which are general ed, because we have that luxury to, to braid. So really, we staff those classrooms based on severity of need of student. So typically, our three-year-old classrooms and our self-contained classrooms, they are going to have a higher teacher-child ratio. So it's not really all about the VPI as much as it is the need of the child.
What does braid mean?
So. So-
Integrated?
Integrated.
Okay, just, sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't know whether it was just like a term, so integrated with what?
Local funding.
Okay.
So we receive our local funding, funding from the Virginia Preschool Initiative, there's some special education funding, and so we, we braid that. The majority of our funding comes from the locality, though. So we don't keep it in separate pots. Yep.
Regarding the regular home visits, what are the educational resources to parents? What does that look like? I'm curious.
Depends on the child. So a lot of our students who may be nonverbal, or maybe on the autism spectrum, those home visits might look a little differently because they're, they're giving them resources in terms of behavior strategies, communication strategies. Some of our students who are maybe exhibiting severe behaviors at school, some of those resources might look like lists of community counselors, lists of wraparound services such as the care team that we have. So it really just depends on what the children and the family need.
And you find those are taken advantage of, those resources?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we're going to share some student data, revealing tremendous student growth. We assess all of our students ages two through five with Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment three times a year. The Teaching Strategies Gold Assessment is endorsed by the Virginia Department of Education and is recognized as a good indicator of kindergarten readiness in the three domains of literacy, mathematics, and socio-emotional growth. The chart that you have before you tonight focuses on our four-year-old data as we look forward, moving forward into preparing for kindergarten. So as you can see, for example, in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we assessed one hundred and forty students in the fall and spring. Initially, thirty percent of our four-year-olds met the kindergarten readiness benchmark, but by spring, eighty-five percent of those tested met the end-of-the-year kindergarten readiness benchmark. In the area of literacy, mathematics saw an increase from thirty-four percent of students meeting kindergarten readiness benchmarks in the fall to a seventy-nine percent, seventy-nine percent of students meeting kindergarten readiness in the spring. Thirty-eight percent of students in the fall to eighty-three percent of the tested four-year-old students met the socio-emotional growth readiness benchmark as well. The two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty end-of-year data will be available after the late spring testing window. So we're pretty proud of that data.
Do you have any information, this is wonderful growth, this, congratulations. Do you have any data that, that benchmarks Bright Beginning students entering kindergarten compared to other kindergartners coming in? So in other words, do you look at, you know, Bright Beginnings kids, kids who had no preschool, kids who had, you know, maybe private preschool, kids who had other, you know, publicly funded programs, and how they comparative, do comparatively?
We have not, and we, we have not, we don't have that longitudinal data, but there've been many conversations on how we can start to gather that, because it's really about looking at, who are we going to compare these children to?
Okay, but so, when you come into kindergarten, there isn't an assessment that all kindergartners have, and then you divide that out by preschool exposure and, and look at it like that?
Sure.
I'm not talking about longitudinal, I'm talking about point in time.
Okay, so the, the PALS-
Yes.
...assessment, we use that in preschool, and they use that in kindergarten, so that is one measure that we can use. And now with the initiative for the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program-
Right.
-we're also starting to kind of think about ways that we could align our, our, our data to see who, how our students are doing on those assessments as well. So that's all very new, but conversations are being had.
Okay, so-
So in kindergarten, you able to identify the kids who have come from Bright Beginnings, as well as students who've come from Star?
Correct.
You could do some comparisons there.
Correct.
Have been done, those done in the past. And, and I think, one of the things that really becomes clear is we have very highly-skilled professional educators working with these little kids, and, and by golly, it shows, it really does. They're, they know exactly what they're doing.
So I, just, so we do not now, currently, look at PALS scores of kindergartners and categorize that based on preschool experience? So we don't look at Bright Beginnings kids versus kids who had no, nothing versus kids? We don't do that?
We do not, we do not do that now, but Robin Moore and I have been in conversations about how to make that happen, because now the pre-K PALS accounts have been merged with pre-K through third. So now we actually have the ability to pull the data a little easier than before.
I think the other thing, too, is PALS is going to be changing, because, books up at the University of Virginia, the began, this began PALS, have become concerned with the fact that it is, it is being used to identify information that, that isn't necessarily correct, and they will, and that test, that, that assessment's going to be modified. So it'll contain many of the same things, but it, it's going to broaden a look at, the look that we, that we make when we, when we look at these kids. And, yeah, it's used, it's being used in some school divisions as a precursor to a particular kind of phonics instruction, and that's not the intent-
Exactly.
-of PALS at all. And so, so it'll be interesting to see how that, how that changes. I think it will change.
Yes, we'll be paying close attention to that.
And when you do get that data, I'm very interested in, in that.
Okay.
I presume, I'm assuming that the Bright Beginnings kids will fare favorably in that, I'm quite certain of it.
Thank you, we like to think so, so.
Mrs. Young, I, I guess, just following up on something that was initially, initially said, which Mrs. Cook said she didn't, was an interest in the longitudinal studies, but I am. How, how do we look, I mean, we, I mean, right now, there is no, any studies or anything being completed on how Bright Beginning students compare with other third graders or second graders.
Since I've been in the program, that has not been something that we've, we've been doing. But I know Dr. Heron and I, and also with Sean and the synergy team, we've been, we've had many conversations about how to make that work in terms of pulling the data, because it's also a little bit tied to their coding, their, the funding codes, so we're trying to get it figured out.
Okay, because I think that would be very interest, interesting.
I agree.
Not, not only for us as educators, but to the community, because I think when you see that a program is paying off, then it gets a lot more support.
I didn't mean to indicate that I wasn't interested in the longitudinal, that's just not the question I was asking, that's all, just to be clear.
Okay, we're, we're both interested in that, words.
Add anything to that, or?
Well, say, I do think it's paying off when we look at the percentage of our four-year-old students who are leaving Bright Beginnings ready for kindergarten.
Right.
That data, really, we should be proud of that, the amount of student growth from fall to spring.
Absolutely. Any questions on that? Okay. So in terms of lasting benefits, of the num, of the numerous research articles and books on the importance of investing in children by providing equitable access to quality early childhood programs, several key outcomes emerge consistently. We have some before you, I'll just share a few. Higher levels of verbal, mathematical, and general intellectual achievement, greater success at school, including less grade retention, less need for special education, and higher graduation rates, higher employment and future earnings, better health outcomes, less welfare dependency, and lower crime rates, just to name a few.
Ms. Gulick?
Just, if you, going back to two slides ago, this, the readiness data, if you could just, for the viewing public, could you just give us a really quick snapshot of how one would measure social emotional growth? Just a, an indicator would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So for social emotional growth, this, this particular domain is done mainly through observation, and so the teachers carry around their iPads, and we have, I believe that domain has seven indicators that we're consistently taking documentation on. So they film the children, they're looking at social interaction, behavior, and once that's documented, then they go in and put the data into the program. So it's, it's a little less task-oriented than the literacy and math would be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, you, I'm, I'm looking at these lasting benefits, have, are, are these, you've mentioned research, is that research the result of longitudinal studies?
It is.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I hate to, this is a little history lesson, but I think I'm entitled to say something about this. The Bright Beginnings curriculum grew out of the High Scope Ypsilanti Project up in, up in Michigan, and there had been years of research on that particular project that led to many of the things that you listed up there, lower incidence of juvenile delinquency, completion of high school, all that, all that kind of, that sort of thing. We haven't been doing that lately. We did at one time, in fact, Professor Tom Ward, who is a, a crack research statistician, evaluated the program every year, but I think that stopped probably ten years ago, ten or twelve years ago. I don't even know if that data is still around, but we need to keep doing that.
I agree.
Because longitudinal stuff is sometimes hard to come by, but if you've got the years, you've, we got the data, it's like, oh, this is too good, you know, we need, we need to, and then follow, follow those kids.
Absolutely.
You know, they're, they're in our school system, how are they doing?
There were so many studies that Sean and I were looking at as we were trying to choose one, just for this particular presentation, that we almost couldn't decide. I mean, the research is there, the data is out there, so absolutely, it could be updated, I agree.
Right.
So as we look, any other questions on that? Okay. So as we look forward, it is imperative to consider our future growth needs. How do we maximize access for the eligible at-risk three- and four-year-olds sitting on our waitlist? Of course, we realize that space is a concern. We must also consider the need for retaining and attracting highly-qualified teachers and support staff. Whenever possible, finding teachers who are duly endorsed in general education and early childhood special education is a blessing. Ultimately, our collective goal is to support, nurture, and grow all of our identified special education students and all of our eligible at-risk three-year, four-year-olds, so that they can all enter kindergarten ready to learn and able to meet their maximum potential. With that said, Governor Northam's proposed budget includes a significant investment in early childhood care and education with a large focus on increasing access to preschool for three- and four-year-old children who are economically disadvantaged or have identified disabilities through the expansion of the Virginia Preschool Initiative. State webinars are scheduled currently for February, March, April, and May, and WJC staff will be tuning in. Well, we've shared a lot of great information with you, but we feel it's equally important for you to hear directly from a student, a couple of our teachers, and a parent on the importance of supporting and providing quality preschool, a quality preschool program in WJCC. So without further delay.
My favorite thing about school is reading books and playing in the gym and playing with the tuck tables and playing inside and outside.
The kids who come into our program, they come from adverse situations with lots of risk factors, and come into a quality preschool program like Bright Beginnings. Gives the students and their families a chance to experience literacy opportunities. The big, big part is social and emotional. Literacy is, is major, but we know with our at-risk population, we have to really focus on the social and emotional equally. They're starting to master ABCs and the one, two, threes, they're mastering their letter sounds, and they're mastering physical abilities, and at the end of the year, we are confident that they will enter the K-classroom with a strong sense of learning, and because we know they've been nurtured in a loving preschool environment.
I think one thing that would really surprise people is just how many accommodations and visual supports that we have inside of our classroom. You know, for my class, I have a self-contained special education class, and when the kids started in my class, none of them had a functional means of communicating. So, you know, that impacts their ability to get their needs met, to answer questions, to communicate with peers. And if you walk into my classroom now, you might not hear a lot of intelligible words, you might not hear a lot of verbal conversations, but if you take a close look at what they're doing, you will see that they all have, you know, pictures in place or different accommodations in place to be able to functionally and independently communicate. And that just gives them the independence to get their needs met, decreases a lot of behaviors, and I think that that would really surprise people.
The growth that Matthew has shown in Bright Beginnings has just been phenomenal. He, you know, started out going there where really people couldn't understand anything that he said. He was largely unintelligible to most people who heard him. And Matthew also self-isolated, so in, in prior settings where he would be with a group of kids, I think that perhaps what was happening was that other kids weren't understanding him, and so he would just be playing by himself. And you see the other groups of kids over there. So now he is playing with other kids, engaging other kids, initiating activities. He's grown so proud and confident, and he's so excited to talk about what he's learning.
So I think one big impact is just helping these children create a foundation for all future learning. You know, a lot of these kids come to us and they've had no experience around peers, they've had no experience with structure in a classroom, so just teaching them how to be a student, you know, how to get through routines, how to engage with peers, to build that foundation for all future learning.
I would say that all of the staff that Matthew has worked with have been absolutely amazing. Not only are they extremely qualified to be in the positions that they're in, but I would just say their passion, their commitment, their patience, and their energy each and every day for all of the kids, it just, it radiates, you know, you can see it. And the creativity that they have in creating and developing an approach for each child, so that each child develops in a way that they can reach their full potential, is just remarkable. We're so lucky to have been accepted into the Bright Beginnings program.
We will end our presentation with a recent quote, quote from Virginia Governor Ralph Northam. I'll give you a minute to read that. We would also like to offer our sincere thank you to Mr. Shoah and the media and Communication Department for doing a phenomenal job with our video. If you have any other questions, Mr. Walker and I are here to answer.
Cook?
So when the increased funding comes for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, where are we going to put our new friends?
Great question.
That's a great question.
Future conversations.
When do we expect that to happen? I mean, if everything goes as, as it's currently proposed, is that, are we talking July one?
They haven't given us a date, actually, unless I missed a memo, but I know that, you know, he's pushing for it, and, you know, along with that is coming encouragement to look at things like the mixed delivery grants, preschool development grants, those kinds of things, because a lot of school divisions are in the same position that we are in terms of space, so we're trying to be creative.
And I'd just like to build on what Dr. Beer said earlier about risk factors. I think that really we have had to focus on, because of the circumstances children are in these days, particularly with our high level of homelessness and our increased levels of poverty, we really have had to focus on adverse childhood experiences, and the, the sort of traditional, old-fashioned risk factors really have become a luxury, and I would like us, but they remain risk factors.
They do.
And so I would really like us to be able to get back to the days of looking at parental educational attainment and, you know, maternal age at birth, and, and those sorts of things that do impact learning. And, and I think for every child that we enter into the program, enroll into the program that has an IEP, we need to enter, enroll another one that, that is a, a risk factor. I think it, I like that ratio, and as we, it shifts more to an exclusively sped program, I don't think that's what our original intent was, and if you look at the numbers, as I said earlier, we're already sort of at seventy child deficit, and we could enroll seventy at-risk kids today, only to get back to kind of roughly fifty-fifty, and so I'm just keenly aware of that. And I hope that we do have a community-wide discussion. I'd like to, you know, I don't know, Dr. Heron, if you have any, you know, thoughts on that. But I, I do think it's something that we need to discuss as a community about where we're going with pre-K because it's such a critical part of, of public education. So, thank you.
I would just make one, one final comment is, and it wasn't, I didn't see it on the video, but I know, because there was more focus on some of the academic things that go on in there. But I know there are centers and there are areas all around those Bright Beginnings rooms where kids do get to interact with each other, experiment, which are all components of an outstanding preschool program. Their books, their things to write with and draw and paint. And those are all critical in their development. I understand about, I understand about pals and I understand about letters and sounds. But, but these kids also benefit from all of those other equally as important activities.
And I think that's one of the, you know, most admirable skill sets that our teachers have is that they really are able to balance, you know, the, the academic needs, the requirements coming from the state, but with also the philosophy and everything we know about how children learn, which is through play. And so, they are able to really engineer those classrooms to be still very play-based, but very much purposeful.
We don't, we don't want our preschools to start looking like kindergarten.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all, that's all I was going to say.
I'd just like to agree with everything that's been said here tonight, and particularly Mrs. Cook. You know, I, I think we have plenty of capacity to expand this program based upon the needs of our community. And I really hope that we, as a community, really take a look at that. I thank you for the information and bringing this to us and presenting this to us. But I thank the teachers more for getting the results that you've allowed, you presented yours.
Absolutely.
They're awesome.
Well, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 7.2, this FY 2021 operating budget discussion. We have some additional information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since our last board meeting, we have an update on the actual percentage increase for healthcare. And so, we felt it would be appropriate to provide that information tonight. And I know Mr. Kelly probably has, and Ms. Cook may have something to, to remark on.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As a member of the Williams, of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2021 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry.
We were listening. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2021 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the conver, in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Since our last meeting, our renewal for health insurance has come in, and it came in at 3.2%. We don't have the exact final rate sheet down to the actual individual plan, but we know the overall is going to be 3.2% increase. Just to kind of put it in perspective, last year our increase was 1.5%. The five-year average for the last five years has been 4.6%. And over the last 10 years, our increase has averaged 4.9%. Again, we feel we have an excellent product for our employees. It's a PPO. It offers a lot of choice. It also includes dental, also includes vision for what we feel is a reasonable price. Just a reminder, health insurance does differ, when we look at it, different than a potential pay raise. Because obviously, if we give a pay raise, that can help our employees also have that advantage when they retire. Currently, the division is paying 82% of the cost, and employees are paying 18% of the cost. Based on the guidance from the board, guidance from the board from last year, we're showing a 3.2% increase being absorbed by the employees. If we do that with this proposal, the overall cost share for the division would be paying 79.5% and the employees would be paying 20.5%. So, I just wanted to kind of show you some of the potential options. So, even with the employee choosing to upgrade to our $250 deductible plan, they're getting an excellent deal. And it doesn't cost the school division any additional money because the employee pays for this change, for this upgrade. But with the 3.2% renewal on our most popular plan, I'm showing here for our $250 deductible plan for employee-only, employee plus spouse and family. For the employee-only, it would shift the employee paying from 14% of the cost to 16% of the cost. So, that'd be a change of $24 per month. So, the employee would be paying $103. They used to currently pay $103, now they pay $127. So, the bar graph on the left, the little sliver at the top is $127. That's what the 3.2% increase would look like for our employee-only on our $250 deductible plan. With the 3.2% increase for employee plus spouse, it would shift the employee paying currently 25% of the cost to the employee paying 28% of the cost. And it would be a change of $45 a month. So, from $353 a month to $398 a month. And that's the blue, up of the bar graph there in the middle. And then, the last plan is the employee plus family with the 3.2% renewal. It would shift the employees paying currently 23% of the cost to the employees paying 25% of the cost. And that would be a change of $65 a month, going from $471 to $536. So, then, the question we've had in the past, and then I wanted to show a couple of different scenarios with a potential impact for, and I have three consecutive slides now with teachers, bus drivers, and custodians. And how that, what that looks like with a potential 3% raise and what that looks like with the, with the changes in our $500 deductible plan and the $250 deductible plan. So, here, on the two bar, bar graphs side by side are what the potential annual increase would be for our employees for the $500 deductible plan or the $250 deductible plan. So, for teachers, if we had a 3% raise for beginning teachers, that would mean an annual raise for them from this year to next year of $1,338. So, on the graph, that's more than obviously what than what the health insurance cost increase would be. And if a teacher is currently making $50,000, a 3% raise would mean a $1,500 raise for them. We just wanted to kind of show what that potential impact would look like. Now, for bus drivers, it's a little bit different. And now, bus drivers for us, and the way we get the beginning bus driver pay is our, a beginning bus driver, the start of the pay rate would be $14.72 an hour, times six hours a day, times 180 days a year. We do have bus drivers that work more than that, but that would be like a beginning bus driver working the minimum amount of time. So, a 3% pay raise for a beginning bus driver, currently making $15,897, an annual raise would be $477. And a bus driver making a little bit more than that, so making $20,000 a year, a 3% raise for them would look like $600. And how that impact, impacts on the same health insurance coverage. But now, for a custodian for us, and I tried to show what a beginning custodian would be. It's a little bit different. So, a custodian working 260 days a year, eight hours a day, and their hourly rate, the beginning rate would be $11 an hour. So, a beginning custodian would be making $22,880, $880 for the year. So, a 3% raise for them would look like a $686 raise. And a custodian making the midpoint on the, on the pay scale or $14, $14.29 an hour, eight hours a day, times six, 250 days a year is $29,723. So, a 3% raise for them would look like $894 raise. We just wanted to kind of show what the raises would look like and the potential health insurance changes for three different large groups of our employees. Another item to consider is the difference that our employees pay when they select, make a choice between our $500 deductible plan to our $250 deductible plan. And again, our employees have choices regarding healthcare. They could move to our $500 deductible plan and potentially save $2,700 a year if they're covering their family. So, all the way on the right-hand side. And this is, you know, annual cost of what they would save, the difference if they switch from the $250 deductible plan to the $500 deductible plan. So, for the annual difference for employee-only, the bar graph on the left, going from those two different plans, is $996. The annual difference for employee plus spouse is $1,860. And the annual difference again for, like, covering their family is $2,700. Some of the questions that people ask, what's the major difference between the, the plans? Obviously, the deductible is the main difference, but also some, there is some out-of-pocket maximum differences. And there are some differences on increase in some copays and co-insurance.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, for the 500 versus the 250, is that per, per member of the family? I mean, for example, if it's 500 deductible, it's total family. But I'm, I'm asking about the deductible. So, if it says 500, the whole family, let's say a crew $500.
And I don't, I apologize, yeah, it'd be more, I can get that for you, of what it would be for the family.
Yeah, so this, this is irrespective to medical costs. This is just, this is just premiums and.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just trying to understand the, the 500 versus 250. Is that, is 500 the deductible?
Correct, like so myself, if I cover my family, it's $500 for me, but the, it would be more to cover my whole family. The deductible's more in addition, and I don't have the exact rate.
Maybe I'm not getting my point across.
So, you're talking about maximum out-of-pocket for the, for the.
Yes, that's what I'd like to know is.
I can get that for you.
I mean, I realize we can't, employee by employee, but I would like to know.
Maximum out-of-pocket.
Yeah, maximum, there you go, maximum out-of-pocket.
Yeah, so the, the numbers are per person then total.
Mm-hmm, right.
I can get that for you.
The interface for me.
Sure.
Tonight, yeah.
Sure.
And just a, a clarifying question. So, the county employees, do they have an option for employee and spouse?
For the county government? I believe they're, all new employees for the county are only receiving their high deductible plan. Much, I think they, my positive, I think they can add their family if they want to, but it's only in their high deductible plan for new employees, for the county, is my understanding.
Which is the least expensive plan?
The least expensive, okay. I just wanted to see what our.
There are a lot of other businesses that no longer accept spouse if the spouse has a, a health insurance option elsewhere. We still offer that option, not everyone does.
And the, kind of the last slide I have is just talking about regardless of the employee chooses the $250 deductible plan or the $500 deductible plan, WJCC is paying the majority of the bill. Again, currently, the division's paying 82% and employees are paying 18%. And so, the question I had posed to me was, what does this look like on an annual basis? So, to cover an employee-only, WJCC pays on the employee's behalf $7,836 a year. And for the employee plus spouse, WJCC pays on their behalf $12,552. And for their family coverage, WJCC pays on their behalf $18,840. And regardless of which plan, for right now, like I said, the $500 deductible, the $250 deductible plan, WJCC's paying the same amounts if the employee chooses to play the other plan, they're paying for it on themselves. So, based on the current enrollment, that, that is how we get WJCC paying $18,456,816 out of the total bill of $23,233,437. And the employees are paying the remainder, which is $4,776,621. So, again, this proposal is to have the overall cost share would move the employees paying 20.5% and the school division paying 79.5%.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. That was just for your information this evening because we didn't have the information at the time of the budget workshops. We wanted to make sure employees knew what was under consideration. Thank you for the time this evening.
Are there additional questions from?
Thanks.
Mr. Baker. And with that, we're going to move on to policies. Item 8.1, retire policy, G B C E drug and alcohol testing for motor vehicle operators.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to present this policy this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's policy was adopted in 1994. And we are recommending that we retire policy, G B C E drug and alcohol testing of motor vehicle operators. In a subsequent policy tonight, you'll see that we are revising the policy's name and putting it in a different policy. But tonight, for this one, currently, we are retiring policy, G B C E drug and alcohol testing for motor vehicle operators. That will become a regulation now.
Other questions? Okay, now moving on to 8.2, new policy, G D Q, drug and alcohol testing for motor vehicle operators.
Thank you. Again, we are now requesting that policy, G D Q, drug and alcohol testing for motor vehicle operators be accepted and approved by you. The policy is similar to V S B A policy, G D Q, school bus drivers. We are changing the policy name to drug and alcohol testing for motor vehicle operators. The attorney has reviewed and supports the recommendation, and the policy committee has also reviewed the policy and recommends approval as presented. There are some subtle changes that we are making to the, the V S B A policy that the attorney asked us to make. Those were, and some of the ones that we've asked for, if you have it in front of you, if you're looking at it, we have removed a statement that says furnish a statement signed by two reputable persons who reside in the school division. And so, we are removing that, but we are also adding into here on line, I want to say 38. It is now not only school bus drivers who will, who could be required to do drug testing. We are asking all drivers who use division vehicles. However, random testing can only be done on drivers who are practicing safety-sensitive positions such as school bus drivers and not do a random test just on anyone at that time.
So, if someone driving a.
Snowplow.
Snowplow runs over something.
Then, you can because you can, you can ask because it's now, suspicion is, is there. But unless.
Damage is a curb. But it's not random.
Not for, for those who are in a, who are not in a safety-sensitive position, you cannot random test. You have to have suspicion. For those that are in a safety-sensitive position such as our school bus drivers, there are, there is random testing done on those, on, ongoing basis throughout the year.
So, in line 30, talks about the use of AED defibrillator. I'm just, do we have those on our buses?
Well, anyone who uses, who drives a bus has to take certain CPR.
Yeah.
We don't have AEDs on our buses currently.
I didn't think so, but I just thought that was interesting. Okay. Moving on to item 8.3, revised policy, K L, public concerns and complaints.
Cox is coming up to present, I believe, the next two policies. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Policy K L, public concerns and complaints, was first adopted by the School Board in 1984 and revised in 2004. The recommended changes this evening align with current WJCC practices that, the practice that school-specific concerns are first addressed at the school level and progress up the chain of responsibility as needed. We've maintained the language indicating that if satisfactory resolution cannot be reached by the complainant and the superintendent or designee, that the matter can be placed on the agenda for a future closed session of the School Board. As a reminder, appeals for student suspensions and expulsions are covered by policy J G D and J G E, due process safeguards, and employee grievances are handled in compliance with state code. The school division attorney has reviewed the recommended changes and supports them as presented. The policy review committee has also discussed the recommendation and supported the presentation of the policy to the full board this evening.
Was there any discussion about line 21, a future closed session meeting of the School Board? I'd, I'd like to hear that because that struck me as odd.
So, that is in our current policy as well. It's actually in code that a, a parent may bring a recommendation or may request for a formal review by the School Board. It's not a hearing, it's simply a review. And since these often will involve.
Usually, but that's why I, I said, did you all discuss it or the policy?
Originally, we had taken that language out of the policy, based on discussions with the school board attorney, saying that, again, that's covered by state code, but the request was to put that back in specifically, so we did.
Yeah, I guess it troubles me a little bit, because I could, I mean, I think you're right, it's a majority of the time, but I could imagine a situation in which it just wouldn't be an appropriate closed session topic if it's something building specific. I would think most times, but not all.
Yes, I think in our discussions, we just were, I think hesitant about removing the language, because it took, it took a right away from...
Right. We really, we didn't want to remove the role of the board in this process, and that's why we kept it in there. And the other thing is, in our, we also talked a little bit about, although it wasn't policy, in the SOP, there is also language in there that allows individuals to contact the school board member directly. So I think that's, is that...
Right, it was two-pronged. It was, it was, it was to still give the public some kind of, so like, if for some reason there was something going on that they felt they weren't, they weren't getting or feeling that their concerns were being met, that as a final right, so to speak, of appeal, it could, it could go to that level, not that we see this very often at all. And then, on the other side, as Dr. Beers said, it is one of our, it seemed to be in consensus with our standard operating procedure, or not in line, with our standard operating procedure, that a community member could go to a school board member. So that's all. It was just trying to keep those two things in alignment.
Thank you, that's helpful. Thank you.
Is there another one in code?
I was going to say, and in code, it specifically states that if there's no resolution, it can be brought to the board. Obviously, state code also governs what can and is or is not appropriate for a closed session, so that would be something that could be amended and put on the agenda as needed.
In the SOP, or I'm sorry, in the V S B A policy, they refer to, at the board's discretion, the matter could be heard at a regular board meeting. And we really, we questioned that, and I'm not...
Yep, you're right, you're right. We talked about the wrong venue.
And that's why we wanted, if it was going to be done, if anything was going to be in a closed session, you know. Clearly, parents can complain anytime they want when they come to a meeting. But there may be certain things that it's more appropriate to deal with that way. That's all, that's all we thought.
Thank you. Fabulous policy committee.
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal.
So moving on to policy K M A, relations with parents' organizations. This policy was adopted by the school board in 1974 and is before you this evening for its first revision. The language in this policy was updated to align more closely with V S B A policy and current WJCC schools' practices. Of particular note, we added the word student to line seven to recognize that some schools have a parent-teacher-student organization, or a P T S A, rather than simply a P T A. In addition, on line eight, you'll see that the word educational was stricken to acknowledge that some parent organizations, such as booster clubs, may be advancing and supporting extracurricular activities as well as educational programs. Lines 17 and 18 were removed because current board policies and school practices mentioned earlier in the policy are already consistent with the state code of Virginia and V D O E programs and guidelines. The school division attorney has reviewed the recommended changes and supports them as presented. The policy review committee has also discussed the recommendations and supported the presentation of the policy revision to the full board this evening.
Questions for Ms. Cox?
Very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item, action items, tip one, action item.
Madam Chairman, with approval, the personnel agenda is presented.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sarza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 10.1, board member matters and requests. I'll start with Mr. Dowell.
Yeah, so I had an opportunity to head up to Washington this last couple of days and participate in the advocacy institute conference with Mr. Kelly and came back with a lot of great information and a lot of great questions for our superintendent and our staff, and we'll be communicating on those. And particularly, I was really stunned to learn about the Juul and the vaping epidemic that is taking place in our schools, the intentional targeting of our students by these industries and the damage that it causes, just the immediate damage that it causes on a young person's life and on their health. Did a little bit more research on my own and the, softly here, the ignorance of our students and what they're actually putting into their bodies. And they're taking part in, 66% of students polled, high school students polled, 66% believe that it's just flavor. They don't realize that there's twice as much nicotine in a Juul pod as in two packs of cigarettes. It's just incredible. And then, the evidence goes to show that 30% go on to actually pick up a pack of cigarettes. And so, why is that? So, learned a lot from that, from that conference, and I would appreciate being able to work with you and seeing what we're already doing to address that in our schools. I'm sure we're doing a lot already. And I know our teachers see it and they face it and see how we can support them, support our parents, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Hey, I think I missed my opportunity, but I'm going to just talk, one of the things tonight we talked about was the health, the increased costs in healthcare and, because I'm totally opposed of the school district assuming that, that increase, I do think the employees should do that, but for two reasons. One, I think that we're already paying over $18 million. Our faculty and staff, they pay just over $4 million. And I don't really want to see that balance increase, but however, I would like to see, to offset this, that the superintendent and the board consider an increase of 4% pay, because that does a really wonderful thing, first of all, that goes towards our faculty and staff's retirement, where if we just apply it to benefits, they don't get, that doesn't, does not apply to their retirement. And since that's one of my big things, I really would like us to consider that. It also would work favorably, I think, for us to be in competition with our locales. From my understanding, Virginia Beach is looking at a 3% to 3.5% raise. That would put us at a step if we stay at 3%. The other thing is, I did go to the Equity Conference and I brought back for our counselors and would like to encourage our counselors and counseling staff to talk to our students about adding this app to their phone. It's called Not Okay. And what this app does is that you can, any student can fill it out and you put it on your phone, and then, if you are having a bad day or you're considering suicide, it gives you an opportunity, there's a place on there to put five trusted contacts that they can contact if they need help. And this came out of a family who presented at the conference where their daughter had attempted suicide, and it was only because the mother had some feeling that she needed to go check on her daughter. But then, her son created this app so that future students would not have that problem. But I will be talking about that at SAC also, because it's a free app and it also, it can alert people, and all you have to do is touch a button and it will let people know that you need some help right now. And you can find it on the, in the App Store. The other thing that I just want to mention is that we've been requested and encouraged on several occasions, and I'm a big proponent of the J R O T C program. And although we do not qualify under current guidelines for a J R O T C, there is an alternative program. It's called the National Defense Cadet Corps. And I had spoken about this before, the annual cost probably for our school division after the first year would probably be about $150,000. The initial cost is about $250,000, because this is not funded in any way by the military, by any of the military organizations, J R O T C programs. But it does provide some amazing things, and one of the things that I, it does do, it's equal in performance to J R O T C. It provides some of the very same outcomes, but it develops citizenship, it develops self-reliance, it develops self-esteem skills, it develops an importance, an appreciation of the importance of physical fitness. And a person who participates in these, in J R O T C or the National Defense Cadet Corps does not have to join the military, but the outcomes at schools that have it are very positive, especially in low-income schools. And so, I would like us to consider that. I'd like to have a more in-depth discussion of that, and maybe we can have some other people come and talk a little bit more about it. But I am huge on that, because for three of my children, and especially my two sons, it had a huge impact. Especially one of my sons who was really headed down the wrong way, and all of a sudden, one of the things I saw with him, he started standing up taller and straighter, he started looking at me in the face when we had discussions, and he wasn't so angry anymore. And so, I'd really like us to take a harder look at this program and see if we can't somehow carve out a way that we can support that in our schools. And I think I was thinking specifically of Lafayette, which is our, probably our closest school to reaching that, that point where, that benchmark where maybe we could have it, but we're just not going to make it, because I think right now, the focus of the military is to have these programs in inner-city schools. So, thank you.
Mrs. Young, and we'll have an opportunity to talk more about the budget at our next meeting on the 18th, when the superintendent chairs are proposed. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I also attended the Equity Conference up in DC and was very much impressed by some of the individual stories that were shared by some of the speakers up there. I was particularly interested in going to a session that dealt with gender issues, and I went to another session that dealt with hate and related activities in schools. And one of the things that really came out in the gender session, because there were a number of people there who were struggling with the challenge and sort of the rapid evolvement of this particular issue. And, but one of the things that came out was, people finally, they started to say and they recognized that, I'm going to get the initials wrong, what is L, L?
L V G T Q.
L V G T Q. Is that, is that, they are, they're beginning to be recognized as a minority group that is seeking redress through the courts, like many other minority groups have done in the past. And I don't think everybody fully appreciated that until it came up a couple of times, because we, you know, you fuss about the lawyer, or the parents brought a case, or, but it was, it was a slightly different way of looking at that, a different kind of perspective to think about that. And then, the session on hate, which actually turned out to be positive, but it was clear that this organization had been tracking incidents and events all across the country. And the single largest percentage of incidents involved race, and the second most common kinds of incidents involved a gender or sexual identification, that sort of thing. And many of the suggestions that came up, really, we've sort of been doing this anyway, but really focused on, starting at a young age, and having students develop a sort of a positive attitude about themselves, about their peers, and continue on up there as they went through school. But I, and I was also struck, because there were a number there, there were school counselors there who also weighed in on this, and I just wanted to reinforce the value of our school counselors and the continued need to continue to have more, because of the nature of the world our students, our kids are growing up in. It's not, it's not the same one as many of us grew up. It changes, and it changes rapidly. So, and I've, gosh, I fully support identifying heroes of hope and the bright beginning presentation. From my way of thinking, it is the best way to begin, kids who have the kind of challenges that we're all aware of, and I do encourage the ongoing gathering of data to continue to show that, you know, this is the best, this is the best bang for the buck. And one of the things that I hadn't mentioned earlier is, this program began with a special ed grant, actually. And the purpose of the program was to see if the kids who came out of that program were less likely to go into special education programs. That had been shown in other projects, and again, really neat data to look at and see, you know, are we still doing that? And the other thing I would, the only other thing I would say is, I look forward to other presentations of other programs that are trying to meet the needs, that are meeting the needs of our students, and particularly our young students. And one of them that I look forward to hearing about is the ongoing success of the reading recovery program. That's it, I'm done, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A little over a week ago, Mr. Dowell and I attended a meeting of the Village Initiative, really enjoyed that time and sharing of ideas with those folks, and appreciated them making their meeting available for us. I went to the National School Board Association Equity Symposium with Mrs. Young and Dr. Beers and really enjoyed that and came back with, I know the administration hates it when he goes to these things, we always come back with ideas and it just drives them nuts, but we try to, I'm trying to temper that as much as possible. And also, the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute with Mr. Dowell. My share is concerns with the Juul impacts, not sure that I was necessarily as aware of that as I should have been, of how that has really come into our kids and impacted our kids and was marketed and targeted for kids, and, you know, I think we really need to put some thought into that. Another thing too, which I came back from was Wi-Fi access for kids. They had several interesting initiatives that they talked about there, putting Wi-Fi on school buses and then parking school buses in needy neighborhoods so that they would have access of Wi-Fi through this bus, maps that they distributed that showed where free Wi-Fi was available, and then, the ability to check out MiFi's. I thought all those are, I'm not saying that we should do that here necessarily, but I thought that was really pretty interesting strategies for meeting that, because I know not every, all of our students have access to Wi-Fi and broadband in their homes, and I think it's, I think it's an interesting...
And I think it's, I think it's a, an interesting initiative. And I'd like to know how much of that, how much of a problem we know about with our students that we have. Chair, Mrs. Young's thoughts on the budget. Another thing which I'd, I'd like to, like to be interested in is substitute teachers and bus drivers and, and what we're doing for them in the new budget. I know substitute teachers, you can't pay them enough for what they're doing. But we haven't adjusted that in a long time, and I think it's probably overdue for that and bus drivers. And if nothing else, to show them appreciation for what they're doing. And I'd like to know what the budget impacts to that are. You mentioned earlier in the meeting that it was, February was School Board Appreciation Month. And for all of us grizzled old vets, we understand that for Mr. Dowell and the thirty-five days, how much we've worked him over the past three meetings, VSBA conferences, NSBA conferences, community meetings.
He doesn't have his track shoes.
So I, it's, it's, it'll slow down. I mean, so I just want to just acknowledge that and appreciate his efforts to come up to speed over the past month and all that he's, he's done to do that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr..
For School Board Appreciation Month, I would like to appreciate my fellow School Board members, in particular the ones that went to the Equity and the Advocacy DC meetings. I, I know it takes a, you have to take time out of your day, your weekend, take time off of work to do that. But I just, on behalf of the other School Board members that couldn't make it, we really appreciate that you went and that you shared your, your.
Dozens of presentations.
Dozens and dozens of presentations.
We love your email.
I know what I'll be doing this weekend, reading, reading all this. So I wanted to, to thank, thank you guys for that. Also to say that I really appreciated the Bright Beginnings presentation. It's always just so great and heartwarming to see the actual results and the way we touch kind of our most vulnerable population and do wonderful things for them. So I just, it's just so wonderful to see that. I would like us, with the calendar year, not to give up on the idea of starting before Labor Day. I know it looks like it's kind of a done deal, well, definitely a done deal for next year and possibly a done deal for the year after. But I agree with Ms. Cook in that what, I, I think we need to really look at what is best for our students and kind of go from that perspective. And if it's best for our students to, to have a pre-Labor Day start, how do we go about making that happen? It's just, I, whether it's getting, the bills changed, the going, looking at how other school systems have done it. Anyway, I just, it's just heartening to just say, oh, and I know that you guys have put a ton of work into making the sausage, and I appreciate that. I just don't want us to lose sight of the big picture, so. That's it. And yes, yes, I would like us to look at substitute pay in the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I agree with your comments about substitute pay and bus driver pay and certainly about the budget or the calendar. I think if we could at some point align with the community college system and end, I think that, that is a, a great end goal and would impact many of our students. And then just wanted to attest as, as a parent who experienced Bright Beginnings and whose son was served by CDR and then Bright Beginnings with an IEP, exited Bright Beginnings and was on grade level for kindergarten, needed some more support in third grade and had an IEP and now has a 504. So anecdotally, there's one kid who is on grade level and, and that was with. So there are lots of those anecdotal stories, but I think it's very clear that Bright Beginnings is comprised of staff who are very highly trained and are very passionate and certainly care about all students in our community. And then wanted to give my, my regular shout-out to our bands. So I know that War Hill and Jamestown just got back from Disney, where they had an opportunity to march in the Disney Parade in Lafayette. Got back from New York City, they actually traveled with orchestra and choir and a, and a small group, a handful of Jamestown orchestra students too, to kind of fill out the bus. So, and just wanted to thank our teachers and staff for making those opportunities available to our students and, and thank the parents who travel because they are wonderful opportunities. And I know that there are some structural barriers to allowing all students to have access to that, and how you overcome that, I don't know. But I am grateful that our students have that opportunity to, to travel and experience and, and those are aligned with what they're, they're learning in their band and orchestra and choral classes. Moving on to upcoming events, Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on the thirteenth at six-thirty at James City County Rec Center. Policy Committee is meeting on the twentieth at eight AM here in the Annex. School Liaison Committee is also meeting on the twentieth at eight AM in, in the, is that right?
Yes, different rooms.
Different room. Yeah, room three oh nine and room three hundred. And then upcoming meetings will have a closed session on the eighteenth at six PM in Building F at Mounts Bay, followed by a regular meeting at six-thirty. Then we'll have a closed session on March third here in the Annex, followed by a public hearing at six-thirty. And then on the eighteenth, we, we'll have a, a school spotlight, I believe Lafayette. Is it going to be our school spotlight, Dr. Heron?
Yes, that's correct.
Alrighty. Okay, that's exciting. We'll have an opportunity for a public comment and the consent agenda. And then, of course, the action items will be the school calendar. And we're going to award a contract for the bus garage, HVAC work, and Superintendent will present her operating budget. So unless there are additional comments or questions, this meeting is adjourned.